In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the municipal clerk on January 7th, 2013, faxing a copy thereof to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 8th, 2013, at 8:47 a.m., and posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board on the main floor of Borough Hall 221 South, 5th Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on January 8th, 2013, at 9 a.m. Fire exits are to my left and my right, your right and left respectively, excuse me, and assistive listening devices are available, and I would ask both people who are on the dais, as well as members of the public, if you are at the microphone, please speak into it so that we can hear you and your voice can be picked up at home. Okay, uh, where was Allen Williams? Did I spy you in the audience? Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
[inaudible]
Clerk, would you call the row, please?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Pearl Mittler? Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman Malay?
Here.
Councilman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Walkowitz?
Here.
Or Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Or Administrator Kovak?
Here.
Okay, council reports. Let's start with Councilmember Foster Dublin.
In following up with our meeting, with our gun safety meeting, we had a meeting two weeks ago, and we talked about, we had Middlesex County Assistant Prosecutor that came out, Cindy Glazer, and Special Prosecutor that came from the county office as well, Reginald Johnson, and they were here to talk about gun safety. There was a workshop that was done. We also had gun, they talked about the two gun buyback programs, which is going to be in Somerset County and, what's the other county?
Monmouth.
Monmouth County and Somerset County is going to be having gun buyback program in the next two weeks, that anyone who wishes to participate in that buyback program can do so. At any time, any residents that has guns that they want to turn in, all they have to do is call the police department and make, just call the police department, tell them they have guns they want to turn in, provide their names, there'll be no questions asked, and they can turn the guns in, because people will sometimes move into a home, and then they find a gun that was left in an attic for a number of years, so they can just turn it in to our police department. During the workshop, there were a lot of good Q and A, and some of the follow-up from that workshop is that we'll be having our own workshop for our residents to talk about gun safety. There'll be a workshop that will be done for children and adults, and there is also gun locks that people can, that we have, that you can just call the police department and receive your gun lock for anyone who's interested. So the workshop will be in the next two weeks, and we'll be advertising on Facebook, on HB website, and there'll be a mix of communication going out. And we'll also put some information on our website, so people can have information there as well. That was it for my report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Potts?
Just wanted to report, next Monday, which is March 18th, the seniors are going to be having their St. Patrick's Day celebration, that's going to be held at 12 noon at the Senior Youth Center, and they'll be celebrating St. Patrick's Day with a traditional Irish lunch, so don't forget to wear your green if you're available and want to come to that luncheon next Monday, the 18th. The mayor's teen advisory committee has been active, they're having their first event this coming Saturday, and it's going to be a talent show, and that's going to be held at the Highland Park High School cafeteria, and they're having their regular monthly meeting this coming Thursday, here at 7:30, here at Borough Hall. Looking a little further down the calendar, on May 27th of this year will be the annual Memorial Day Parade, so I just want to mention that, we'll be keeping you updated on that, that's going to be on May 27th this year for the Memorial Day Parade. Thank you.
Councilmember Walkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, at 6:30 p.m. at Irving School, is their annual open house for registration of all children. This is especially important for all the pre-K kids or children coming from other schools. It really helps with them in terms of knowing what the enrollment will be, but also it's a wonderful party, and all the classrooms will be open, teachers will be there, there'll be demonstrations, so please come out with your kids. And Thursday marks the first Thursday of the month where we've changed the schedule for the Universal Access Commission meeting, which used to meet on the third Thursdays, it's now going to be the first Thursday of every month at 7:30 here in Borough Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Erickson?
On tonight's agenda, there are a couple of things that have to do with the adoption of our budget for the next year. We're kicking within the 2% cap that's been established by the state, in fact, we're $800,000 under the cap as legislated, and that's not because we're not raising 2%, it has to do with the way the budget within the cap works. But we're trying to be reasonable, at the same time, provide services for Highland Park. One of the things that unfortunately, we had hoped to hire two police officers this year, and we're only going to be able to hire one, and stay within the cap.
Okay, thank you. Council President Malay?
Just a brief announcement, the Borough will be going ahead in producing magnets with the schedule for recycling pickups, both on the north and the south, and the only I think area that will not be on the magnet would be the downtown business district?
Yes.
And at this time, we're not sure, you know, if we're going to, how much of a volume we're going to produce, but we are going to, you know, do this and then use it as a template, and hopefully be able to have a much further, you know, distribution next year, but they are coming out, and that's my report.
Thank you. Borough Administrators' Report?
Good evening, Mayor.
I'm sorry, hang on one second, can we get Kathy's volume turned up a little? I can't really hear her.
Hello, is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Here, I'll come over here.
Yeah, please.
Good evening. This evening I wanted to mention on the agenda, we have the final reading for the sidewalk improvement program. Every participant who, anyone who has signed up to be in this program, by law, had to be sent a copy of the ordinance, so that they were aware where we were in the process. The next step will be the Borough Engineer will visit each location and assess what needs to be done, and compile bid specifications that will be sent out, advertised through the paper on our website, so that prospective contractors can bid on the project. He will review, as will the Borough Attorney, all the bids that people send in, and they'll make a decision on who the contractor will be. At that time, each resident will be notified on what the cost to them would be, and they can make the decision whether to proceed with it, stay with the Borough Program, or go with their own contractor. I wish I can give you a timeline, a more specific timeline at this point, but I'm not sure how long it's going to take the engineer to compile all this information. He already has the list, he was sent the list once the residents were notified, we had, that's the first thing we had to do, the law requires us to make sure that every resident has a copy of the ordinance. I do, I hope to have this complete, the big part of it completed by the beginning of the summer, but I will, I will keep updating the residents and let them know where we are. At this point, the engineer is compiling the data to get bids, bid specifications for the sidewalks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I assume many of you are here this evening related to questions you may have about the sidewalk improvement program, so we're going to devote a portion of public comments, so we can try to get any questions or concerns that you have addressed, and we don't know all the answers, like if somebody said today, "How much would my sidewalk cost to be repaired?", we don't know that yet, that's the purpose of the bidding process, but as soon as we do know, you'll get that information, and then you'll be able to make a decision about whether or not you prefer to stick with the Borough's Sidewalk Improvement Program, or whether you want to contract independently to get the sidewalk repaired through some different mechanism. Okay, Borough Administrators' Report, thank you, Borough Attorney?
No, no worries.
Thank you. Okay, just have a couple of quick items. We don't have any issues here, but they're on the clerk's counter. Hopefully, all of you received an issue of the Highland Park News. May I? Thank you. The Highland Park News. So if you haven't seen it, we have copies here, it was supposed to be mailed to each property owner in Highland Park, each resident in Highland Park. So I would like to, and I think that this is a terrific effort on the part of many people, both Borough professionals and volunteers, there's a lot of information in here, and I can only say that I think with each, the template has now been created, and I think with each passing issue, we can look for improvement, new information, different sources of information, et cetera, so I'm very pleased that this is out, and I hope that those of you who have seen it found it useful. There's a lot of reference and resource material, as well as updates on various things that are happening in and around the Borough. I would like to thank, in that regard, Monica Jackson, our Communications Coordinator Professional, as well as Valerie Drack-Bardman from the library, both of whom helped immensely with the compilation of this. I'd like to thank Yel Pearl Mittler, our Borough Councilmember and Chair of our Communications Committee, and Matt Hirsch, who is the volunteer chair of that committee, and they did your person's work to get this off the ground, so I thanked them, and I thought that was terrific. I'll also just mention very briefly that, in addition to rubbing and treading last week for the Governor's Budget Address, which was most interesting, because everybody is still trying to figure out whose fault it really is for the mess that New Jersey is in economically, I'm pleased to report that fiscally, I think Highland Park is in good shape, and this is an extremely, extremely conservative budget, and we have done everything we could to try to be as sensitive as possible to the impact of any tax increase. So it's really a bare bones budget from a municipal perspective, but one of the things that I also had a chance to do was, last Friday, we spent a portion of the morning in the Bartle School, and part of that was Read Across America, I participated in that program at RPRY, that's Dr. Seuss's birthday, but also, we took time out, we, meaning me and most of the Borough Department Heads, spent about 45 minutes meeting with a group of very curious and inquisitive fifth graders that wanted to know what happens in the Borough Government, what's it like being in the Borough Government, does the mayor get any sleep at night, what does the mayor do in his spare time if he has any, what do the Department Heads do, how do we interact on a day-in and day-out basis, and how do we get the business of the Borough done? So I was thrilled to be able to participate in that, I thought it was really wonderful, and I certainly encourage that, I think we have some fourth graders that are coming over to visit us in the municipality, so they can learn more about how different Borough Departments work, and then a little later in the year, there's an annual visit, I believe, to the court. Last night, the Boy Scouts were in court, right? Yes. The Boy Scouts were in court, not because they did anything wrong, but they were here to observe court, just to see how a municipal court operates. So there's any of a number of things that we're trying to do to not just reach out, but be accessible in that regard, and as you heard, relates to the mayor's teen advisory council, try to breed another generation of leaders, those young citizens interested in civics, and I think that that just can only benefit all of us as a community, and a greater community beyond Highland Park as well. Okay, so with that, here's my modest proposal for the way I'd like to manage public discussion this evening. I assume many of you are here because of the sidewalk improvement program, so what I'd like to do is devote this first public discussion to questions specifically related to the sidewalks, okay? So how many of you have questions related to the mailing you got of the sidewalk improvement program? Okay, a fair number of you, so what I'd like to do is, if we need to go longer than 15 minutes, we will, but let's start with that, and those of you that have questions, why don't you please, one at a time, you can come up here to the microphone, give us your name and address, and we'll deal with those questions first, and then any other questions we have, we'll certainly have another public comment at the end of the discussion tonight. By the way, just so you know, while, and you don't have to form a line, just sort of make yourselves comfortable, and you can sort out your own sequence, the budget is being introduced tonight, but the public hearing on the budget will happen when we actually adopt the budget in?
April 2nd?
April 2nd. So if you have questions on the budget, it would be better to do those at the public hearing.
Right.
Okay? I can tell you that the budget will not increase, by law, the budget that we increased, that we introduced tonight cannot be increased, we can only decrease it, okay? So anyway, with that, I'm done rambling, who would like to ask questions related to the sidewalks, or sidewalk improvement program? I saw a couple of people headed this way. Just please give us your name and address.
Chris Davies, 152 Dartmouth Street. My question is that, I've been a resident in Dartmouth Street for, going to 11 years now, and when I first moved into that, that house, the present state of the sidewalk was as it is then, as it is today, and some portion of it was mapped off as needed repairs, and I do have a county hydrant in one of the places that is being elevated. So my question is, is it my responsibility to correct that, that particular area of the sidewalk, or is it the Borough's in responsibility to correct that one?
What does the Borough Attorney say?
Is this the sidewalk that goes across the front of your property?
Yes.
Then it's your responsibility.
Even though the, you could see that the hydrant was situated, and there's an elevation?
He's saying that the hydrant may have caused the elevation, the fire hydrant may have caused the elevation.
Well, I guess you could certainly, we can have the Public Works people or the fire people check that, and if the fire hydrant is driving up your sidewalk, is that, is that what you're saying?
No, that's the, that's the way the sidewalk was, I could have pictures of it and bring it to the office.
So maybe we could do this, based on what you're saying, if you give the clerk your address, either after the meeting, or you call in tomorrow, you give her your address, you have the address, oh, she has the address, that's, you gave us the address.
Yes.
In case you're wondering, I am paying attention.
I could have pictures of the areas.
Yes, no, thank you, and what I would say is, and what we'll do is, when the engineer comes out, because the engineer's going to have to visit each site individually, so we'll coordinate that with our people, and then we can give you a more definitive response, okay? Thank you. Other questions? Yes, please.
My name is Bernadette Metzfin, and I live at 301 South Fourth Avenue, and I'm wondering how I can get a copy of the specifications of the materials and things that are going to be used when the sidewalks are installed, is that, I assume the Borough sets the specs?
The engineer does, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be no problem, and, you know, since you are essentially the, even though we're grouping together, you are a customer, so that's, that's fine.
Okay, and when and where can I do that?
Well, that would be when I, when the engineer develops his specs, but I assume there's a-
Can I contact Kathleen?
Yeah, what, yeah.
You can also, you can also look at, keep an eye out on our website, because the bid specs will be put on the website.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is because a number of people have already had their sidewalks done, some better than others, and-
Right.
I'd like the better one.
Okay, no problem, but certainly, certainly you can get a copy of the bid specs, that's, absolutely.
Needless to say, we're hoping that ours will be in the better category, not the other category.
Sure will.
I'm sorry?
We don't put the bid on the web, oh, don't look on the website.
They're not from the engineer, they're available from the engineers.
Okay, let's restore order here. Okay, so they're-
I'll have a copy on file at Borough Hall.
We'll get you a copy.
Okay, so let's just, if you indulge me for just one second, so just in the interest of clarification, the bid specs won't be on the website, but the Borough Clerk will have them, so if you contact the clerk's office, she'll get them for you, okay? Thank you. Yes, please.
Evening, John Lopadula, 411 Graham Street. The program, is it strictly confined to the sidewalk adjacent to the street in front of your property, or can it be extended to the sidewalk to your front step or your stoop?
Okay, so here's the way that works, as I recall, the, and feel free to chime in as soon as I trip, figuratively speaking, so the way that works is, you, under the sidewalk improvement program, you can deal with any of the sidewalk that falls in the public right-of-way, you are welcome to work with that contractor to make whatever private arrangement you want for any adjoining concrete work you may want to have done, but that would fall outside of our bid specification. So, you know, they might quote you a different price for that, they might say, "As long as we're here, it's the same price", we just, that's something that would be a private transaction, because it's private property as opposed to the Borough right-of-way, but you're welcome to ask, you know, the other thing is too, you know, let's say that right now, you had planned to do two sidewalk squares, we'll call them, okay? But it turns out that you like the price, and you say, "You know what, maybe I'll do three or four or five", you know, you're welcome to do that too, we're not encouraging that, we're not discouraging that, and so that, as long as you cover what you need to cover in terms of where you may have a situation to remediate, you know, anything else is optional, the right-of-way falls within the sidewalk improvement program for whatever you do, anything on private property, you could contract with this mason or another mason separately, you know, to do that, okay?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, who's next? This gentleman, and then, Mark, you'll be next?
Mark Weinstein, 15 North Eighth Avenue. Question I have is, probably two parts of it, one is how are we going to get a better contractor than last time? I had my sidewalk replaced, last time the Borough did it about six, seven years ago, and it's the same blocks are lifting up because of the municipal tree, so either they didn't do it right by cutting a notch so that the tree had room to expand, or the tree wasn't cut down far enough. Can I guarantee that we get a better contractor?
Well, I think there are a couple of things. One, the way the program is supposed to work, and there are a few points there, one is the so-called meandering, where the roots are sort of, where there's a sculpting of the sidewalk around the roots. Another scenario is if the Borough Tree Surgeon feels that root grinding is indicated, that'll be coordinated with the contractor. The third, you know, is really a function of, there were really two contractors last time, we fired one contractor in the middle of the program because they were using inferior materials, candidly, I mean, what they said they specked and what we inspected were different, so we fired them, and we replaced them with another contractor. So in this instance, our goal would be to get it all right the first time, with the specifications, and coordinate between our tree surgeon, who is our tree expert that makes the decisions related to which roots need to be grounded and which don't, and then make some determination, and what you also get, by the way, is part of the package that you'll receive in the proposal, is a little diagram, you know, picture's worth a thousand words, so for example, if I had to, if I had to draw for a living, I'd be about 50 pounds skinnier, because I'd be starving for a living, but let's say hypothetically, your sidewalk looks something like this, you can probably pick this up on the camera at home, and you have a tree sort of, I don't know, somewhere right around here, you can see my little likeness of a tree in one dimension, the mayor goes to school for drawing, so what would happen is, a determination would be made, and your proposal might indicate that there's a piece of the sidewalk, did you see that little curve that I drew? Right, so there's, that would be the indication that the sidewalk would actually meander somehow, and I believe that they actually draw that on the, you know, on the little diagram that you'll get, so you'll see in advance what the plan is for your particular sidewalk, and you can obviously have whatever questions you need to have answered related to that at that point.
Is there any recourse in terms of the fact that this is now done within seven years, having to replace it in terms of sharing with the town?
What does the attorney say about that?
Well, I guess we could, I mean, normally, there's no guarantee that they're going to last, you know, more than, you know, a certain period of time, and unfortunately, if we had a poor contractor, that's part of the problem. I guess we could look into that, but I think the answer is probably no, they're probably going to have to have you back with the sidewalks again.
But to your point, one of the things I guess we could look into when we do this contract, would be whether or not there'd be an express warranty for a certain period of time on the workmanship and materials, yeah, so-
But it wouldn't be anywhere near the five or six years that, you know, you know-
What about in terms of if the tree can't be cut down any further, because I understand the roots can only be playing down so far before the tree has been removed?
There's a, you know, there is the possi, you know, depending on, you know, there is the, you know, the last thing we want to do is remove a tree, but it may be a possibility.
I mean, if it's necessary, and it's going to create a safety hazard, we'd certainly want to have a conversation between you, the engineer, and the, who did I leave out?
Tree surgeon?
Tree surgeon.
Yes, thank you, and see what the best scenario is to try to accommodate that particular concern.
Now, would they also lift up the blocks and do whatever need and replace the existing blocks?
They can, I believe they, I believe they can do that, yeah.
Okay, and that would be part of, the engineer could recommend that?
Yeah, and in fact, that may be a scenario, when the engineer comes out, he may be able to say, "You don't actually have to replace the block", they may be able to lift and grind the roots and replace it, I don't, I don't want to promise that, that may be a solution, that I have seen circumstances in which they were able to do that.
Okay, because there are, the blocks are in good shape, they just lifted up.
Okay, yeah, that may address your problem.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
My name is Mark Mappin, I live at 33 North Sixth Avenue, Highland Park, and respectfully, I would like to ask this, so when I applied for the program, I did a sketch, probably on the level of the sketch you just drew, and indicated the slabs that looked like they had to be replaced, and those that did not have to be replaced. So my question is, when the engineer does his inspection, will he take into account our recommendations for what has to be replaced and what doesn't?
Oh, he has received all the paperwork, so if you drew something up with your application, he has a copy of that, and he will be discussing with you, if he agrees, doesn't agree?
Yeah.
You know, I can't promise he'll agree with what you're recommending, but he will definitely be talking with you when, especially when, before the contract is drawn up.
And if he, and if your opinions are at variance, he'll explain why he feels that, you know, a particular piece of sidewalk may require replacement or not, and then, you know, if there's still an issue, we'll figure out what to do at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Steve Uro, I live at 41 Highland Avenue. At the last Borough meeting several months ago, it was brought up that there was no product that was found that would satisfactory level, so it was prevented from us doing that, but for a half inch to two inches, I actually called SAC Crete, and they told me there's a product, sand mix, and there's a bonding agent that can be used that would satisfactorily do this, so I'm wondering, where's the evidence that the Borough has that these, this product doesn't work?
And how long do they guarantee it to last?
I can do further, I can do further-
Well, see, that's, we've been down this issue before, and, you know, the Borough is looking for a more permanent solution, and, you know, I've been in construction 25 years, and, you know, manufacturers, and it, and it works, it's fine, and then, but with, you know, you know, one of the other issues that we were dealing with was using alternative materials, and part of the problem with that is not having any, you know, defined specs that we could say to you, "This would work, you have an alternative to use, let's say, rubber" or something like that, so, you know, and in my opinion, and the opinion of, you know, the, it's just not an approved method, because we have no guarantee it will last, and it depends so much upon, you know, the bonding agent and the level, and just frankly, you know, with freezing and thawing, my experience is, five years.
So here's-
I don't have to deal with the opinions, I'm just-
Well, okay, well, so, excuse me, okay, you asked a question, I'm going to give you an answer. We asked our Borough Engineer to research, I can't speak to this particular set of materials, okay, and I'll get to what you just said about SAC Crete in a minute. We asked our Borough Engineer, in conjunction with our Director of Code Enforcement, to research bonding agents, and to research patching as a strategy, and their answer was that they felt that that did not offer sufficient stability to ensure the level of safety that we were interested in, so therefore, they said that that would not be acceptable. Now, I don't know if they researched SAC Crete, or if SAC Crete had this particular product on the market, so as a show of good faith, what I would say is, if you want to give us the information that you have, I would direct the engineer to look into that particular product, and if he has an opinion on it one way or the other, and I suspect that he will one way or the other, we'll communicate that to you directly, so that you'll have an answer, which won't be based on opinion, it'll be based on the engineer's facts, and his 30-plus years of experience with these matters. Fair enough?
Not exactly.
Well, you asked, you asked, you asked a question, you asked, you said you don't, you said you don't want opinions, okay, you said you'd like facts. We paid the Borough Engineer to research these types of questions for us, and give us his expert opinion on these matters.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so his ex, so his expert opinion is based on his training in materials and other similar construction projects, so I think he'd be in a pretty good position to know whether or not these specifications would suffice, so it's pretty straightforward. You asked a question, you weren't satisfied with the answer that you got the first time, I respect that. You asked a question again with a specific set of materials, and what I said to you was, perhaps we didn't satisfy a specific answer, so I'm more than willing to ask the engineer to research this specific product, because if it will solve the problem, then we should all know about it, and if it won't solve the problem, I think we should know about that too, and we should know why. I think we owe you that, so I'm more than happy to ask him to do that. But beyond that, if you're going to ask me to make an exception, and you're going to ask the council to make an exception for something that the engineer recommends that we not use, I think it's reasonable for us to not file, to- that we not use, I think it's reasonable for us to not fol-, to follow the advice that our professionals give us.
I'm not necessarily asking for an exception.
I'm not saying an exception, I'm saying if this were worked, then we would use it.
When we moved in, a lot of people, the variance in our, our housing inspector lives in Highland Park, it was three inches. And then all of a sudden, the borough wants to go and go to the half-inch level and say a half-inch heaved block is not, is, is a danger.
Ed, would you speak to that, please?
We haven't seen, we haven't seen a lot of injuries or data or complaints on this. And I think in certain cases, a half-inch to two inches is just, doesn't warrant replacing a whole block.
Okay, hang on for a second. Chief, did you get a report today of somebody that fell on a sidewalk in Highland Park and broke their wrist? Okay. I don't know exactly whether it was two inches, whether it was a half-inch, whether it was an inch or not. I have a sidewalk in my neighborhood that I happened to walk across a few months ago, okay? Totally dry, middle of the day, and I guess I wasn't paying attention. I'm lucky I didn't break half the bones in my body, okay? Because I took quite a nasty spill. As I understand it, and I'm happy to let the, the borough attorney speak to this, you know, Ed, what is the, what do you say with regard to the inspector's analysis or assessment of the particular hazard or the sidewalk itself and its condition?
Well, there's no dimension given, but it's the borough engineer's responsibility is determine whether or not the sidewalk is sufficient to provide for pedestrian safety. So that's the standard that they use in taking a look at an individual sidewalk. So each sidewalk is evaluated. When they come out to your property, they will go slab by slab by slab and investigate and talk to you about what they think needs to be replaced. But the bottom line is, it's really the borough engineer's call in terms of what he or she thinks is a safe sidewalk.
I want to be very clear about a couple of things. First thing is, I'm very, very sensitive to the fact that these are not the best of economic times, okay? This is not, first of all, the borough profits zero from this. The borough's intention is not to profit economically from this, nor do we. So if there's anybody, I'm not suggesting that you say that, but I-
Saying it, I think you're suggesting-
No, what I'm saying is I'm clarifying the myth because I've had people suggest that somehow the borough plans to line its coffers with this particular program.
Make it clear, I'm not suggesting-
Okay, but some people have, so as long as we're on TV, I want to say publicly that we're not. Secondly, as far as I'm concerned, this is about one thing and one thing only, pedestrian safety. This is a walking town, and I think we have a responsibility as homeowners and property owners to try to keep our sidewalks safe. We've enlisted the assistance and the agency of our professionals and our inspectors to assist us in that process. We did a townwide inspection, and now we're doing as we're going back literally block by block and house by house to make sure that we get this as right as we possibly can for the collective public good.
I have one final question.
Okay.
How can we deem this as, as a successful proj-, project when still I can try and walk down my, my sidewalk for my block, and on neither side of the street, there's a sidewalk? So we're still forcing people to walk into the streets. So to me, it seems like that's a big miss on this overall broad picture of let's be a, a walking town when the city hasn't offered something like 50/50 for people voluntarily who don't have sidewalks in front of their house on either side of the street to actually get some sidewalks in there.
Well, that's one way to look at it. Well, that's one way to look at it. I think there are a couple of ways you could look at it. One way to look at it is to say that there are many communities, and I'm not saying that we would ever do this in Highland Park. There are many communities that send out an inspection notice. They tell the residents you have 30 days to fix the sidewalk. After that, we're going to find you, we'll haul you into court, we'll put a lien on your property. I don't think that's, that's something that would be very Highland Park-like to do, okay? But they don't offer sidewalk improvement program where they say to, to a resident, if you're interested, if you're interested, we're giving you the option to piggyback on a group pricing program where you can pay this out over a five-year period and get the benefit. I heard before that there's variability in workmanship. So the borough engineer effectively goes out to ensure that the materials that are specified that are ones, are the ones that are used, and that the sidewalks are ADA compliant, and that they meet our specifications, as opposed to, you know, a homeowner just at random deciding that because they happen to like a price or they happen to like what a contractor says, that that may or may not be the best sidewalk for them. So we're trying to provide this as a public, as a, as a service that people have the option to either participate in or not. That's a separate ordinance from the way the ordinance is currently structured that says that if a person has a sidewalk, they're required to maintain it, on the one hand. On the other hand, if a person doesn't have a sidewalk, we don't currently require them to install a sidewalk. I said last year to the governing body that that's something that I think we can take a look at, but I don't think we're going to have that issue resolved this summer. So, you know, the argument that maybe everybody should have a sidewalk? Well, that's something, you know, we had a pedestrian safety task force. Candidly, we got a little distracted with the infrastructure requirements associated with Sandy. You know, getting the power back on and dealing with the aftermath of that has consumed a great deal of the governing body's time, not by way of excuse, but by way of explanation. And there are some real issues that we've got to deal with. So certainly, on that list can be whether or not we think that it would make sense to discuss with the homeowners that don't have sidewalks, whether or not they should be required to install a sidewalk.
I think-
However, 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 we've got 28 road miles in Highland Park right now. The overwhelming majority have sidewalks associated with them. There's a pretty heavy lift associated with making sure that we get those sidewalks in good condition. So if we're going to proceed, I don't think that we should wait until we decide what we're going to do with where we don't have sidewalks. Let's focus on where we do have them and try to get them fixed. It doesn't mean we would ignore the other situation. It just means that I think there's a practical sequence in which this could occur.
I'll send the Sa-, who, who should I send the SAC Crete information so they can talk to their experts?
Do you want to give it to the borough administrator and we'll get it to the engineer?
Can I email?
Do, do you want to give us that, or would you rather email it? Whatever's easiest for you.
Well, I'd rather email it so I can give the technical number directly.
Okay, that'd be perfectly fine. Okay. You want to see the administrator right after the meeting?
I don't know if I can wait around, but-
Okay, well, you can get her, you can get her contact from the website.
On the website has my email address.
Okay.
Okay, Kathy Kovak, thank you very much, okay? And we'll follow up with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes, other questions, please?
Hi, my name is Joy Kaczynski. I live at 116 North Fifth. I have the same problem as Mr. Weinstein. I, I haven't even finished paying for the last installment to have my sidewalk fixed, and now I already have to get the sidewalk fixed again.
Is it the same sidewalk?
Same two pieces of block that were lifted up by the same tree. And the tree was actually, when they redid the sidewalk, they did a curvature so that it's not, the sidewalk is not as close to the tree. They cut part of the root, and now that same tree lifted up the same two blocks.
Okay, so let, let's do this. Here's my modest proposal. Kathy, can you make us a, a note? There's probably a subset of properties that have this exact issue. I mean, if there's two, there's got to be more than two. So why don't we flag this as a, okay, so, and if you're going to be here afterwards, would you mind seeing the administrator, or would you email her and give us your address as well? So this way, we know that we've got a few. And if there are others that we have to look at, let's make sure that the engineer takes a look at this in conjunction with the tree surgeon.
Yeah, and what I want to make, I want to make sure that you understand what, my understanding of it was, if the tree keeps lifting the sidewalk, they're going to come and grind the roots. If the grinding the roots compromises the tree, they're going to take the tree down.
I understand that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you understand, okay?
Now, yes, I'm sorry, are your blocks and, Mark said his blocks are in pretty good condition. Are yours in pretty good condition too?
Yes, the blocks are in good condition.
So it may be that-
It's just that it got lifted, because of the tree.
Maybe they can lift them up.
It's a pretty old tree, but it's, it's quite big, okay? And so my other thing is, so I, I guess I still have to make the last payment that's due in April, even though it's going to be resurfaced.
Uh, well, it may or may not need to be. Why don't we, let's, you, you should make the payment for your own protection. I would, I would encourage that, if, if I can be so bold as to suggest. I would encourage that, and then it's going to take a few months for them to get through. There's hundreds of people in town that enrolled in the program.
Right.
So it's, this is not a stick-up in any way, shape or form. The idea would be this way, we can deal with this in a disciplined fashion. And systematically, we can look at these particular properties that have this problem and try to come up with one solution to address these.
Right, just seems kind of silly that I'm paying and then I'm going to have to repay for something that I-
Maybe yes, maybe no. If, I, I don't want to make promises.
Right.
But here's, here's an optimistic scenario for you. If it turns out that the roots can be ground, or that the tree needs to go, if that's going to be the case. If the blocks are in good condition, they may be able to pick up the block when they grind the roots or when they remove the tree, and they may be able to just reset the blo-, the, the block, and it may set exactly the way it's supposed to, and that may be the end of it, okay? And, you know, the incremental cost for that, I don't think would be as much as all the other labor associated with removal, repair, replacement, et cetera.
And then my last question is, I have a, a small portion of a sidewalk that's from, from the sidewalk to the curb, like where I keep my garbage.
Mm-hmm.
Whose responsibility is that piece of sidewalk?
Sidewalk from where?
Basically, it's a piece from the sidewalk to the curb, the little apron that you would, that extends probably from your front step.
Is it in the right-of-way?
Yeah. So if it's, if it's in violation, it could be, if, was it cited, or is it something that you just want to see about?
No, I'm just asking, like, if there's a crack there or something, is it fault there? Is that the township's responsibility or my responsibility? It's perpendicular to the side, to the sidewalk, to the curb, you know, the T-shape.
Did we inspect it and say that there was a problem?
Uh, no.
I would say, and again, we'll research it, but because it's not part of the pedestrian walkway, then it would not have been cited as far as that, that is concerned. It's, I think it was only put in for, like you said, the homeowner's convenience to have something to put the garbage on-
Right.
-that's not in the sidewalk or on their grass. But I'll verify it, but I, you know, because it's not something that somebody would be walking down and trip over or whatever, then I don't think it would need to be replaced. You could always, like you said, you know, work it in with the contractor if you felt you wanted to replace it. But, and, you know.
But is that the homeowner's responsibility or the township's responsibility?
That, that's yours. Yeah, because candidly, we wouldn't have put that in in the first place in the right-of-way because that's where our utilities are. So I don't think we would have put it there. I suspect it's possible that, you may not have, but it's possible a prior homeowner did.
Just as a point of clarify-
So perhaps does my block have that little strip?
Yeah, mine does too.
Yeah.
But again, we're not, because that's not in the pedestrian right-of-way, we're not requiring that to be repaired. One, one scenario could be, you could ask the engineer, you know, when all this is done, what the incremental, and this is totally your choice.
Right.
You know, what's the incremental cost of getting that removed? That may, that may be, it may be less trouble to get that removed when you actually have the mason there, I don't know.
Because it's right, it butts to that tree that's lifting up the sidewalk.
Okay, so that's just an additional inconvenience for you.
But right now, it's not a hindrance on anybody, so, but I was just wondering who, whose cost is that? So it's the homeowners, okay?
Yeah, just, just a, a point of like general knowledge or whatever. It, it's kind of hard to wrap your head around sometimes, but you own those sidewalks. The borough doesn't own them, they, they have the right-of-way. And what we're doing essentially is, you know, making you maintain them to a certain specification, much like if you build an addition, we will make you build it in a certain way with electrical codes and things like that. So that's really what's happening here. We're simply maintaining essentially a code to allow the safe passage of pedestrians. We don't own that property, it's your property, but the sidewalk by law are yours, you know, by ordinance are yours to maintain, and that's what we're talking about here. So anything that's not part of that thing, because, you know, when it was built, it was built by the contractor and the homeowner at that time or whatever, paid for it, so. I just want to make that clear, it's kind of a technicality, but it's, it's important to realize.
Yes, sir, you had a question in the front? Question or comment, please?
Henning Christensen, 21 South Sixth and 212 Walker Street. We own with my wife. I'd just like to quote our new Secretary of State. He came with a statement, and I thought we should think about that one. He, he declared that it is our constitutional right to be stupid. However, he didn't mention anything about being intelligent, but I think that's probably something we can be also. I, I have now listened to a few, we were here last time, talking about it, listened to a few reasons for fixing the sidewalks, and it seems like the main reason is safety. Is that the only reason?
As opposed to what?
Supposed to have someone making money out of it, or?
Yeah, the only reason is safety. And as I just said a couple of minutes ago, the borough's not making any, any money on this.
Okay, good. I have a product that can fix the sidewalks for a fraction of taking it apart and re-cement it. And it's guaranteed for 20 years. It's also perfect to maintain the streets in the township. And it will also cut down on the expense of maintaining and having well-maintained roads, similar to if you cut yourself a little bit, you put a bandage on so it won't spread. If you ignore it, it gets infected and all of a sudden you lose your fingers or maybe the whole hand. So the whole trick to it, in an intelligent way, to maintain roads and also sidewalks for that sake, early enough so that the cost is minimal. This product here will last for years and years and years.
Okay, do you have a written, do you have a written specification for this?
Yes.
Okay, because I would certainly like us to share that-
And I have background for it. I have used it in Highland Park at a driveway, and it's outstanding. But it will cost a fraction, maybe a few hundred dollars, where now it costs thousands of dollars to redo a sidewalk.
So you would share that with our engineer so that we could investigate this further?
It would be very good, because then we don't have to take our right, according to Constitution and our Secretary of State, to be less than intelligent. So, so if we could look at that, it would save a lot of homeowners an awful lot of money. And it's a safe product. After 20 years, you can touch it up and it will last another 20 years.
So here's, here's what I would say. We'd certainly be interested, I can't make any guarantees about what the engineer would say, but I think we'd be silly if we didn't at least investigate it. So what I would ask is, again, if you can communicate with the administrator, Kathy Kovak.
I will do that.
And please get her this information.
And take a look at the product I put down for, or five, five years ago. And I can also prove other spots that has been down for 20 years, and it's still there. So it, it's not hard to prove. I will guarantee it for 20 years. And it costs very, very little compared to what it, and it will be absolutely safe.
Well, it certainly merits exploration. Where that'll take us, I'm not sure, but I appreciate your offer, and I think we should certainly explore it.
Thank you very much, because we must save a little money. We can't keep spending. We can't keep spending $16 trillion going to 17. That's a lot of money.
Right, but that's not what we're spending here, right?
Hopefully not.
Well, not even close to that, but certainly, listen, certainly, certainly-
But before we get that far, let's use some common sense and save the homeowners some money and still comply with the safety factor that we are talking about.
Right, so I'm, I'm grateful for your offer, you'll follow up with Kathy?
I will follow up.
Terrific, thank you very much. Any other questions or, yes?
My name is Stan Ravens, 250 Harrison Avenue in Highland Park. Basically, I have two questions. Number one, I had a similar, I have a similar problem, a similar problem with my sidewalk that two previous people had indicated. I had a section of the sidewalk fixed, you know, a number of years ago by the, by the town, and it rose up again because of the, the tree. A number of years ago, one of my trees on the, at the front of the house was replaced by the town. And I noticed that when the, the, that the town engineer walked through, one of the places that he had marked out is, in addition to the old trees, is the new one. And the new one is about 10 years old, all right? Maybe even less, it might be less than that. So I have two questions. Number one, on the old trees, they were planted and are, and have been there longer than I have. I'm, I'm in my house 36 years, okay? So who owns the tree? I understand, it's my understanding that the town owns the tree. If I'm wrong, could somebody correct me?
Ed, how do we classify the ownership? Is this also a situation where-
Is that a tree that's out in front of your house?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in between the curb and-
It's our tree, so we maintain it.
So there's two questions. Number one, the new tree that was planted, you know, not too many years ago, that root, well, that, the growth on that tree, uh, uh, tree is breaking the sidewalk. Shouldn't we look into the trees to see what type of system, root systems they have to prevent future damage to our sidewalks? Uh, this, this is something that the town has to do, since that's a town tree also, and I, I didn't plant it. Now, this, this is something that the town has to do, since that's a town tree also, and I, I didn't plant it.
Okay, so I'm gonna do.
I'm very happy for the, for the, for the town to plant it.
So I'm gonna answer that question first. So the answer is, I understand it is, and Patrick is our liaison to the Shade Tree Committee, and John Erickson was before that, please verify. I think at one point, excuse me, that's something the Shade Tree Advisory Committee was looking into, were they not? Were species of trees where this wouldn't be a problem? I think it takes a while for them to figure this out, based on a lot of research, as a group of volunteers, but I believe that's something that they have been working on.
It takes a while for the trees to grow, to develop their roots and, you know, big enough.
The problem is that there is no magical tree that just grows down and things like that. You know, one of, you know, we've looked at various trees and they do just tend to spread, and so that it's, it's, you know, we can, we're trying to get better trees that do it less.
Can I guess my second question?
Sure.
My second question has to do with the old trees, all right? I mean, if it's the town's tree, you know, and the tree, I mean, it's this, before I was there, I'm assuming it got to be sixty years old, it's sixty feet in height. Why do I have to be responsible for the town's tree that does damage to, you know, to the sidewalk? I would think that the, you know, that the town would understand that it's their responsibility, it's their tree that's doing the damage. It's not something that I did, it's not something that, um, the other, you know, town residents have done. Why should we have to, you know, pay the full cost of replacing, replacing the sidewalk?
Well, the way we've tried to address that more recently, I'm gonna give you a partial answer to your question, and I'm gonna let the attorney answer the rest of it. The way we've tried to address that more recently is now we require a written acknowledgement from the homeowner that requests the tree. Now, what just gets a little bit cumbersome is, sometimes the waiting list for a tree can be two or three years. And so what happens is, on day one, homeowner number one requests the tree. In year two, homeowner number one sells the house. And in year three, the tree shows up, and now we require the new homeowner to acknowledge that they still want the tree, in part to prevent this type of aggravation. So at least some homeowner can say, you know, I don't want to be put in a position where this tree is going to damage my sidewalk or my plumbing system or whatever else, so therefore, I don't want this. Now, I can't speak to, you know, if this tree is fifty or sixty years old, who may or may not have requested at that point in time. But at least an acknowledgement of where we are right now, we're trying to tune the system, as it were, to try to minimize that type of frustration. Ed, in terms of the situation, can you speak to this a little bit more specifically?
One thing I'd say is that, over the.
John is doing an excellent impersonation of the attorney, by the way.
I just want to say that in the past, trees were planted at the, at the residence's request, and they often picked species that were not appropriate for the, the location. In other words, certain trees need a, a larger area in terms of the root spread than other trees. The street, the Shade Tree Commission has tried to steer people towards planting more appropriate trees as opposed to ones that will actually buckle the sidewalks. But that's oftentimes at the request of the owner, not at the request of the, the town. The town didn't say, well, we want you to plant this tree here. The owner would ask for a certain species.
I understand what you're saying. All I'm asking about, I'm not even talking about the one that was relatively recently planted, I'm talking about the ancient growth, you know, these beautiful trees. I mean, I, I, I don't deny that they're, they're beautiful trees and they enhance the town. But what happens is that they do damage to the sidewalk. And I'm trying to find out why, if it's the town's tree, and it's been there for sixty years or fifty years, I know it's been there more than thirty-six years that I've been there, okay? And it was a huge tree when I moved in, so that's why I was making that assumption, it's, you know, it's of that age. Why, why shouldn't the town be responsible, at least partially? You know, for something that the homeowner, you know, is willing to water and, and, you know, and rake the leaves and, you know, and do those things. But why do we have to be penalized when the roots of the tree, because the tree is so big, get so large to destroy the functionality and create a safety hazard?
Borough attorney?
Well, we, we, we can't go back and figure out, you know, who asked your ancient tree to be planted probably sixty years ago. But it's possible that the predecessor to you or two from earlier that owned the house may have contacted the boroughs, said, please put this tree in. So now this is a consequence of somebody who has owned your house, and now you own the house, having the tree grow up. The bottom line is, whether your sidewalks wear out because of wear and tear, scaling, cracks, whatever, or having a tree push it up, it's still your sidewalk and it's still your responsibility to replace it. Now, as Kathy said, this time, the borough will take a look and to see if the tree can be shaved and it can be replaced again. But if it can't be, most property owners would rather trade off keeping a large sixty-year-old tree in front of their house, because most property owners like that, and would work with the borough to try to shave that down and then maybe meander the sidewalk a little bit further like they did with the, not successfully, but they did with the other young lady's tree in order to try to save the tree. Because I would think most property owners, if they had their brothers, would like to keep a sixty-year-old specimen tree in front of their home. But if it can't be saved, or if you didn't want it saved, the bottom line is, no matter what caused the problem to your sidewalk, it's your sidewalk and it's your responsibility to fix it.
So, but let's go back to the tree. If I say, if I ask the town, I say, look, I don't want this tree anymore, because I've already fixed the sidewalk twice, twenty years or ten years or five years, et cetera, I don't want to fix it again. I want you to take your tree, you know, do something with your tree to protect my sidewalk. What is the town going to do?
You have every right to ask the engineer, when the engineer comes out to evaluate your property. And you could take that position that this is the second time, and the third time's a charm, and I don't want this to happen again. I don't trust you guys replacing this thing again, and I want my tree taken down. I think the borough would take down the tree.
So that with borough, the borough's course would take down the tree?
It's a borough tree, yes, that's right. We can't fix it right.
So taking, so taking, so taking down a sixty-year-old tree is quite an expensive proposition. They'd be willing to spend the cost on that, but not to spend a couple of hundred dollars to fix the sidewalk.
Like you said, there's no alternative. You, you said that in your opinion, if you look at your tree.
No, no, I said, I didn't want to pay it again. What I'm saying is that if you want to keep the tree, I have no problem keeping the tree, you know, in the house, as long as I don't have to be responsible again to, for, to pay for the sidewalk repair.
Okay, so we have separate responsibilities here. Our responsibility relates to the tree, the homeowner's responsibility relates to the sidewalk.
Right.
Okay, there's a right-of-way in the sidewalk, okay? The tree sits in the public right-of-way where there are the utilities.
Encroaching onto the sidewalk, uh, caution.
Okay, so the borough attorney answered that. So, so here's the issue. The issue is not what we would rather do or what we could do, the issue is what the local ordinances say about who's responsible for maintenance. We have certain responsibilities in the public right-of-way, and the reason is, candidly, as you know, there are gas utilities in there, there are water utilities in there. We really don't want individual homeowners poking around in the right-of-way. I mean, even public service has been known to hit a gas main or two once in a while.
Very, very wise statement.
Right, so therefore, you know, if there's an issue with the tree, that's something that if that's an expense we have to incur, that's one form of public good, that's the way the ordinance is set up. But when it comes to the right-of-way in the sidewalks, that's a separate notion of public good, and that's what the ordinance says, and that's set up for the homeowner to be responsible for the maintenance. So, you know, I guess we could engage in a debate philosophically, and I don't mean to diminish what you said or to be sarcastic in any way, shape, or form, you know, these are real issues, but the fact is, you know, we're in the middle of this program right now, and if there were things that maybe down the road, the governing body should be evaluating in terms of who's responsible for, for what, you know, I think candidly, this came about for a simple reason. You know, we did a town-wide sidewalk inspection last year. In any, in any given sidewalk improvement program, we get borough clerk, what, two to three hundred people that participate in the sidewalk improvement program, and we've done it before? Okay, we get two to three hundred applicants, about two-thirds dropped out, we get about a hundred people to participate. This time right now, I think the number of indications of interest, and it doesn't mean that there's many people either want to or will participate, was over five hundred? Well, over five hundred. We did a town-wide inspection, we didn't single anybody out, we didn't say, your sidewalk is good, your sidewalk is bad. We went and looked at all the sidewalks, we made a preliminary determination. Now we're going back with a much more refined eye to try to identify where the real hazards are and address those on a case-by-case basis. So at the end of the day, you know, whether it's a couple hundred dollars for a homeowner, which is a significant amount of money, or a few thousand dollars, which is the borough's responsibility, I mean, it is what it is. But, you know, this, we didn't wake up one morning and say, gee, you know, let's go after this person or this person. We said, there's an issue here in town. I mean, think about it, I said before, this is a walking town, we have people in strollers, we have people in wheelchairs, we have people that walk in the street because they believe it's safer to be in the street than it is to be on the sidewalk. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I don't know how, as a mayor, I could think that that's a good way for us to live. My intention as a mayor is not to impose some financial hardship or burden on the citizens, citizens of Highland Park. When my sidewalks needed to be fixed, I had to come up with the money to fix them, you know? And I did it through the sidewalk improvement program five years ago, and I did it because that seemed to be the most cost-effective way for me to do it. Is it a perfect system? No. You know, if people find the sidewalk improvement program that objectionable, you know, what we can always do in the future, and I don't mean to say this in an obnoxious way, it's just a frustration that I have. If people think the program is, is designed either with some sinister effect, and I choose that word very deliberately, or they think that it's not a good program, you know, as a governing body, the administrator, the engineer, they have a lot of things to do. We're trying to do this because it's the best, most creative way we could come up with to try to find a manageable way to deal with the expense associated with these infrastructure improvements that are the homeowner's responsibility. But as I said before, there are plenty of communities in New Jersey where there is no sidewalk improvement program, and the community has basically said to the homeowner, you guys figure it out. You know, it's your responsibility, if you want to fix it, we require you to fix it, but if it has to be fixed, go get your own contractor and deal with them directly. This is an accommodation, and it's something we're trying to do because we think that it's a good idea. It's worked very well in the past, yes, there have been issues. We're gonna try to address those issues as constructively and as sensitively as we can on a case-by-case basis. More than that, we can't really do.
That's an excellent answer, I don't want to take up any more of your time. Thank you very much, and I'll contact the administrator and let him put the name and, and the address down. And so when the engineer comes through, we could have a discussion with him.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, other questions or comments related to sidewalks? Yes? Please give us your name and address.
Hakeet Mano, five hundred South Fourth Avenue. Two things. One is, has the engineer looked at other materials other than concrete in order to address, you know, issues of like so many people here have with trees? For instance, there are other materials that allow the water to seep through, other than concrete, and would enable the roots of these trees to grow down instead of outward. And on top of that, there are materials that you can then lift up as the tree grows, cut the roots, and, and you do not have to uproot the concrete. It's, it, I don't know about the cost issue, that will have to, you know, people will have to bid on it, and, you know, we would have to do some research about it. The concrete lasts about up to ten years, and then there's all, there are always cracks and you have to repair it. The new materials that are out there that are sustainable and environmentally friendly are way, last way longer. They might cost more now because they're not as available, but they last much longer. So on the long run, we can, you know, cut on expenses for the borough and for the homeowners.
Okay, so I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure you're gonna want to weigh in. You described two scenarios, one is a pervious material, and the other you described is kind of like a rubber flexible material. So we started researching this in conjunction with Sustainable Highland Park and the engineer and our code enforcement officials last summer, last fall, when we began the inspection process. And to the best of my knowledge, we haven't found anything that has a track record or durability that would meet the criteria that you just described, that we would feel comfortable with. But I think, Patrick, you want to explain this a little bit further?
Well, A, it's between now and when this is going out to bid, it's not gonna happen. Just, it's, just, that's a fait accompli. And what, the plan that I'm trying to work on now is to pick, and plus, if we are putting our sort of borough stamp on it, it better be right. And I am unprepared at this time to say that this material, this process is correct, and to have it go out this summer and somebody bid on it and, and do it. So, so what we plan to do is take a, a borough-owned area and use that as a pilot program, and to investigate thoroughly, and to use alternative materials in a borough. Let's say, you know, one instance may come up, is, is the library, you know, the various sidewalks there, it's something under borough control, so if there's an issue, well, and it's a small one, then we fix it. But at, at this point in time, you know, Public Works and our engineer and everybody, we simply do not have a, enough of, A, specs to send out, qualified bidders, things like that, to be able to organize and put it out in a meaningful way and have it. You know, the whole reason that we're doing this is so that people can, let's say, save money by a, you know, by expanding the number of people involved in it. But if you start having this person do a rubberized sidewalk, and this one do a permeable concrete, and this one do concrete, the savings goes out the window. So at this point in time, we're unprepared to proceed down that way.
I understand that the savings might go down, but can the homeowners have a choice?
At this point in time, I don't know if there's any, just to, just to finish, I just don't know if there are any specifications in the code that, you know, that say, you know, I'll have to research that, you know, as far as, you know, because one of the things that the code does, or various construction code, is it says, what's the surface preparation underneath that's required for this? You know, one of the things about permeable sidewalks, and I was talking to somebody about that, so, yes, maybe this, the roots actually just go under the sidewalks more because they're getting more water right underneath them. You know, you know, have sidewalks like this been down for fifteen years so we can see what's going on? So, you know, while, you know, various things can be, you know, brought off, you know, from the internet or something, you know, it, it's, it's, this is too large of a project to, to go out at this time and be confident that what we're suggesting and recommending to these, you know, to the homeowners will actually work.
I understand that. To, to my, in my opinion is, you know, Highland Park is a sustainable community. It, I, I think it should be researched more, and the.
Correct.
In, in this time of point, when there are five hundred, you know, property owners, what a good chance to improve our, you know, the well-being of our, our trees and our homes, and not go so fast and do the concrete. So if we, we waited like, I don't know, a year beyond when everybody else has done it, so we can wait perhaps half a year more and investigate that more, I don't know, I'm just putting it out there.
Okay.
The other question is, I.
I'm sorry, just hang on one second. Do you have, forgive me for interrupting. Do you have a specific, in other words, there were two, two other individuals that have spoken that mentioned that they've got access to a specific material preparation, whatever the case might be, that they're gonna share with us for us to do some further investigation, and we're gonna do that. I'm not putting you on the spot, but I'm asking in the same vein. Do you?
We've been researching that product as well.
The one that you're describing?
Yeah.
There are, there are a few different things that municipalities have been trying, mostly in the West Coast, there are some, there is one in New Jersey or whatever. What I'm saying is, considering, taking a little more time for us to come up perhaps with people who would educate us about it and see if it's something viable that we can do, especially because we have such a big mass of people who need replacement. That's one thing.
Well, I think we can continue to look at it. My optimism would be low, just based on what we've learned thus far. But that doesn't mean that we can't continue to look at it. Please, you had another question?
Yes, I'm in a corner property, and there is, I have a big, big, huge and beautiful oak tree. So the corner slab, I, I understood from my, the owner that I bought it from was put by the municipality. Is that true or not?
It could have been.
Are you referring to the sidewalk cut?
Yes.
The handicap access, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, is that damaged?
The whole, it, it was poured as one big slab, and the, the roots have uprooted it. So now there's like a gap of an inch or two.
What corner is that?
Five hundred South Fourth.
Why don't we take a look at that?
Yeah, that's a good question, we don't know.
What?
But, you know, it may be part of the street, it may be, you know, because of.
It could have been done when we did a road improvement project over there, but we'll go take a look at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Yes, other questions, comments?
Just on a, a general note, and I, I've brought this up before. You know, this is the way we try to maintain the sidewalk. we try to maintain the sidewalks. If, let's say, the borough was to somehow, you know, somehow decide, all right, we'll take over total ownership and maintenance of the sidewalk, your taxes would go up, without a doubt. I mean, I mean, that, it's, it's, to me, it's a trade-off, and it'd be interesting to run the economic models, but, you know, as the one gentleman says, "Well, it's only a couple hundred dollars if you guys would fix this." But maybe there's a thousand instances in Highland Park where that happens, so that's, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, for right now, this is the, the program and the, you know, the way we're doing business. Now, if we want to change that, that's, that's an undertaking, but, you know, I just want to make people understand that if the town fixes it, you're paying for it. And it may seem like it would be spread out better over the large group, but that only means that you'd be paying a smaller amount over ten years rather than, let's say, you know, because your taxes would go up, you know, every year, not, you know, I'm just bringing that up to a point as it's just an understanding of the realities that we face and sidewalk maintenance will have to be paid for one way or another. That's all.
There was somebody else over here, I think, that might, yes?
Good evening. My name is Jason Piston, Lake 20 North, Fourth Avenue. Just a quick point of clarification. So, I understand that the sidewalk portion is the homeowner's responsibility, and that it was indicated that the tree that might be in the, between the sidewalk and the curb is the responsibility of the borough. And so, if the tree ultimately needs to be removed to correct the problem with the sidewalk, that would be the borough's responsibility. Does that also mean that if the tree root needs to be grinded as part of remediating the sidewalk, that that would also be borne by the municipality?
Our tree surgeon would handle that.
Okay.
Did I say that correctly? Yeah. Yes.
Clarify that one point. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Marco Shinsky, 240 Wayne Street. I have a few comments. I'll be brief. I hope I won't be interrupted as Mr. Ural was. If the ostensible reason for the sidewalk program is to advance safety of Highland Park residents, I think you've missed the mark. I've reviewed the accident reports for the last ten years in the town. They're very sketchy, very sketchy, very weak support for any sort of slip and fall safety argument, number one. Number two, if we're concerned about safety, we ought not to lose sight of the fact that seven very large trees that I saw at least went down in the storm right adjacent to redone ground, tree root sidewalks. I have photos. My wife predicted it on the record here at a borough council meeting before the storm. I predicted it as well. I'm not proud of the prediction, but it was obvious it was going to happen. So, if you're going to damage more roots, get ready for more injuries on that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments related to the sidewalk program? Okay, so, let's do this. I'm going to close public comment. Thank you all for your input, and those of you that we have to follow up with, please, if you promised us information, please get that to us, and then we'll be back in touch. We'll establish a dialogue and a method of communication. And others that may have other issues? Yes, John?
In regards to alternative products for sidewalks, we did submit a grant to the New Jersey Department of Transportation to do rubber sidewalks in certain areas of town, and the DOJ, DOT turned our grant down. They said they would not accept rubber sidewalks as an alternative. Result is, we haven't had the opportunity to experiment with alternative products that we'd hoped to have, and so, we're sort of trapped in a place where we don't know whether alternative products would work as well as regular concrete. But I think the council is open to the idea of using alternatives that would be more permeous.
Pervious, right?
Pervious.
Yeah. Especially if they're more permanent.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, anyway, I'm going to close this portion of public discussion. Thank you all. This is very, very helpful input, and we're very grateful for what you've shared with us. So, we'll have public discussion on other matters as soon as we conclude our council business. Okay, clerk, can you report on the introduction of the cap rate exception ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Calendar year 2013 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Can I have a resolution, I'm sorry, motion to adopt? Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Can we have a court?
Yeah, you have a court.
We have a court? Okay, fine. Okay, thank you. Clerk, report on the introduction of the 2013 municipal budget and tax resolution for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Municipal budget of the Borough of Highland Park County of Minnissack for the fiscal year 2013. Be it resolved that the following statements of revenue news and appropriation shall constitute the municipal budget for the year 2013. Be it further resolved that said budget be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of March 8, 2013. The governing body of the Borough of Highland Park does hereby approve the following budget as contained herein for the year 2013. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at Borough Hall on April 2, 2013 at 7:00, at which time, in place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2013, may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons.
Can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Clerk, report on advertising the bond ordinance providing for the 2013 sidewalk improvement program for consideration of passage on final reading by title. Motion to take up the ordinance.
Wait a minute. I have to read it first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you read it before we have a motion?
Thank you.
Clerk, could you read this before we have a motion, please?
No. Bond ordinance providing for the 2013 sidewalk improvement program along various rural properties in and by the Borough of Highland Park County of Minnissack, State of New Jersey, appropriating $600,000 and authorizing the issuance of $571,000 of bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost, and the special, yeah, special assessment of the cost thereof has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on finding reading by title, and affidavit of publications are on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection as required by law, and the supplemental debt statement was filed in the clerk's office by the Finance Director prior to introduction and was received by the Division of Local Government Services on February 5, 2013.
Okay. Now, can I have a motion to take up the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Public hearing? Seeing that there's none, can I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda. I'm going to
Don't read the numbers.
I'm sorry?
Don't read the numbers.
Well, the way I'm going to do it is, I'm going to do 31392 through 313102 inclusive. Resolution to approve change orders for the public safety building. Resolution to refund duplicate tax payment for Block 68, Lot 24. Resolution to approve taxi operators. Resolution to approve bus list. Resolution to authorize the reversal of return check fee 612 South Park Avenue. Resolution approving summer schedule for Borough Hall and the Senior Youth Recreation Center. Resolution to approve wrecker licenses. Resolution to credit water and sewer account 19-21 South Second Avenue. Resolution to approve 2012 recycling tonnage grant application. Resolution authorizing disposal of surplus property. Resolution amending fee resolution for Department of Community Services. Can I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Minkoff appoints the following to service professional for 2013, Borough Planner Alan Chectel, and I hereby appoint Debbie Hare to the Commission for Universal Access. Can I have a motion to confirm?
I have a question.
Yes.
Before we were approving Alan on a month-to-month basis, is this for the full year, or is this?
My understanding is that it is, and that the, there were just some questions that wanted to be smoothed over, and I believe that everybody's had those addressed to their satisfaction.
Okay.
And this also, remember, we also appointed a special planner as well, you know, from Clark Hatton in Heinz. Yes. Okay. So, can I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Any open items? None? Okay. Public discussion? Any other public comment?
Speaker 307 Magnolia, I have some questions. First of all, you're going to introduce the municipal budget. When is a copy of the budget available?
Borough clerk, when is a copy of the budget available?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Oh, okay. What does CAP stand for?
Cap.
Oh, that's the tax levy cap?
Is that an organization?
No, it's, it's a cap, just a cap on
Like a ceiling. It's a ceiling.
Ceiling.
Governor Christie
Oh, okay. Okay, good enough.
That's a good question.
Why, it's all capitalized. I see your point. It sounds like
Like an acronym?
Yeah.
The recycling schedule, it's rather confusing when it was sent out. We didn't know it was supposed to be every other month.
Oh, that's the bulk trash you're referring to, correct?
Pardon me?
Are you referring to bulk trash?
Yeah, talking about the bulk stuff.
Yeah, it's every other month.
Yeah, but it didn't say when the starting month was, and because of the winter holidays, it was shifted out. I think the bad weather interfered. They didn't pick it up at one time, so it lay around. Is there some way where you can make the calendar date, it'll be the first, you know, which month will be the south side and which month will be the north side?
That's a good idea. Can we update the schedule somehow?
Well, it's going to be on the magnet.
The recycling magnet?
The bulk trash will be on the mag
It will?
Well, see, this is a new magnet. Better.
So, we're going to send out, we're going to make available for those that want it, a refrigerator magnet, and on there will be the recycling schedule for the various sections of town.
You're going to make those for the multifamily houses, too?
Well, they'll be, they'll be available for those folks that want them. So, anyway, what I was going to say is that in addition, according to the borough administrator, it sounds like we'll also have the bulk trash schedule on there. So, this way, for anybody that wants it, that'll be available. They can put it right on their refrigerator, they'll know when recycling is, and they'll know when the bulk trash
Where do we get them?
They have to be made up first.
It's in process. But I think
I'm sure we'll have some here at the clerk.
Hopefully, we'll send out a reminder, whether it's, you know, on the website or the, because I think part of the confusion that comes up is when we have, you know, weather that, you know, knocks us off our schedule, and everyone says, "Well, is it coming today?" You know, so, we'll send that back out, you know, because usually, it's, you know, we leave like the Wednesday open, but, you know, we have to reconfirm that, and unfortunately, since it happens infrequently, people forget, but we'll try to set up, send out a reminder.
I just wanted to make a comment on the tree thing. When, there was no tree on my property when we bought the house in 1976. I never wanted this tree on my sidewalk. But the borough decided, there should be a little tree. And one day, before I, long before I moved here, there was a little tree there. So, I called, and they had sent me a notification that I could request one, and I ignored it because I didn't want one. So, when the tree was there, I called and said, "Would you please remove the tree because I don't want it?" Well, we think it ought to be there. And they also planted, what, old department is gone, to his children who live on the house next door to me, they also planted one. Well, their tree didn't survive, but the shoots, so now there is a bush and obstructs when cars, their property and my property, when the cars want to back up, it's a big bushy thing, no tall tree. So, nobody respected our request not to plant a tree.
Well, that's why we changed that.
Good. And
And we certainly can look at getting those shoots taken care of as part of whatever maintenance is being done by the Public Works folks
Yep.
To alleviate that obstruction.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I just replaced three slabs on my sidewalk for the third time. They weren't broken. There is something wrong underground, even though the water department came to check on it. There is a slab that settles, and so, there is a gap there.
Which, is this, what address is this?
I paid less this time for three slabs than I paid for one slab, I don't know, ten years or so ago.
Okay. I'm sorry.